Twenty twenty four, can I get a roll call?
Jane?
Here.
Herb?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Hillary?
Here.
Jeff, yes. Jody?
Here.
Rebecca?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
And Koi?
Here.
All right, let's stand some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, we just need to add one thing to the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add the board report to the agenda.
Support? Any questions? Can I get a vote?
Herb?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, first up is BHS student report.
Um, tour and everything like that. Um, we have our Thanksgiving break coming up, which is very exciting. Um, obviously, we always have our tutoring and our B Mac um, club going on after school. And um, our humanities class uh, went to the DIA trip and um, Ms. Dawson actually uh, read that, so it went well from what I heard, and I heard that kids had a lot of fun, so that's good.
So as far as sports you're going right now, we don't really have too much because winter sports are just starting. So tryouts were last week for most sports, but girls volleyball, uh, had their banquet Monday, last Monday. But um, basketball had our first scrimmage uh, Saturday, and we lost, but we're building a program, so it'll be a process for sure. And uh, girls basketball, or uh, I think they have a scrimmage coming up, and then wrestling has a scrimmage Saturday, so.
Um, we have a lot going on in student council, as always. Um, this week is our charity week for our draw charity that I mentioned last time. Um, it's uh, disaster relief at work. So today we had um, pajama day and we sold donuts in the morning. Um, tomorrow we are doing jailbreak where students can skip up to two classes and um, they have to pay money for it, but uh, they get to go in the cafeteria and do whatever games we have in there. Um, Wednesday is... I'm sorry, I'm blanking. Um... I don't remember what it is, I'm so sorry. Um, but Thursday, we have Rent Asuko where um, students can rent student council members for three hours of the day, and we will carry their books for them, or you know, help them do classwork, anything like that. Um, and then Friday, we actually have Mr. Stevens uh, sitting in a dunk tank. So students get to pay to um, dunk him, which should be interesting. Um, and then we had our blood drive last week, which went very well. We reached over our goal and um, people volunteered to donate blood, which was really great. Um, last week we also went to Camp Kopek Nakonic as a council, and I thought it was really fun. I think a lot of people uh, enjoyed the activities that we did this year, and that's one of our, our uh, our council picture that we took at our bonfire the first night. Um, so yeah, we just got council bonding and leadership activities, and it was very uh, very successful. And then um, we always have our fundraising for our council. Um, we are coming up with a bake sale here in November, or sorry, December. It's gonna be December eighth. Um, feel free to drop by. Uh, we'll have lots of yummy treats. Um, it'll be at, at Beaky's, um, just down the road. And um, we are planning on unlocking at the elementary school. We had that a couple weeks ago, and that went very well. The kids had a lot of fun, some mild injuries, but you know.
Anything else? I think that's all we have for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could where I saw your gap when he was coming in for the basketball meeting tonight, I put in a good word for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up superintendent report, Ms. Carly Stone.
All right, at this time I'd like to pass the baton to Mrs. Ransford and Mrs. Bowdy, Dr. Bowdy. They'll be sharing information relative to their PBIS work um, with our school bus. Whatever you would like.
Good evening, everyone. So Nicole and I are here to share um, a... Yeah, it's okay. You can use the PDF, scroll down, it's...
Cause I don't quit. All right, there it is.
So Nicole and I are here this evening to share um, an Oakwood bus action plan that we implemented um, this school year, and just to give you a preview of where we currently are, as this is something that will be going on all year long.
So we decided to do this, um, we had a meeting right when I first started in August um, with both elementary admin teams, as well as some people in higher admin. We had a meeting to discuss the increase of bus write-ups to referrals at the elementary level. And so we worked together, Colleen and I as a team, to collaborate on like a tiered system, just to roll out and try to see, to try to cut down on some of these referrals.
So we noticed one of our buses that had the highest referrals. We kinda wanted to tackle that piece and dig in a little bit deeper. Um, so we gathered all of our students together to kinda hear their voice, and we did a little social emotional learning activity with them. And we used that information to add on to our plan. We discussed the importance of being safe on the bus, and then we introduced this new action plan. Um, we had some paper copies that we sent home with students and families in addition to in-person and phone conferencing with families.
Oh, you guys have a clicker.
Oh. I think the formatting, something went off.
Changed.
It's okay. Um, so last school year, we had finalized um, our PBIS Hawk Trade posters. Um, we did a lot of things within PBIS um, to really uh, support positive um, strategies with students. Uh, teachers implemented lessons, um, a lot of work with the transportation department and drivers. One thing that we realized is we needed to do something a little bit more based upon um, the number of referrals that had come in.
So this is a copy of our bus action plan, this is part that went home in a parent letter. So we have a kid-friendly version.
Do you, do you mind, would you put back up that original PDF you had and just scroll down? Cause that's the...
I think it's the second one to the right on the top of your tabs.
This one right here?
No, second one to the right.
Oh, right.
The right. That's the left.
Oh, one more.
Okay, maybe go left one more. Sorry.
I heard the board. Yeah, these are the...
Yeah, it's missed him.
There.
He said, yes.
If you just wanna scroll a little more.
Okay, so right.
Yep. So this is our um, bus discipline action plan. Scroll a little bit more down.
It's super small.
Yeah, you can zoom at the bottom there, Alexis. There you go.
Okay. Are we here?
Yep, so the next slide. Go ahead.
So this is what we're implementing, we've started this year, is, so the numbers at the top are the amount of bus referrals per student. So the first one, if a student gets one referral, they lose their recess. I communicate with the janitor teacher, which is better. Their lunch recess or their additional recess in the afternoon. They watch bus safety videos with me. Um, I went through and Googled a bunch of different videos, what is for upper and lower L. And then also we contact the parents, either by email or phone. The, our parents wear, same thing if they get two referrals, loss of recess. We have a bus reflection sheet that we created. Then we also make contact with parents. Third is much of the same. Fourth is a next step of like suspension of bus privilege. We did get there a little bit, and we're gonna talk more about that in a later slide of what that looks like.
Perfect. So um, this is our data from last year, so we had a total of ninety-four student referrals. Um, and we're looking at the window right now to compare the data from the start of this school year to current. Um, so last year in September, we had ten, in October, we had five. Um, and the highest referral months were in April and May, and so that's something that we're taking into consideration as we continue this plan um, throughout the school year and adjust things as necessary. Some factors to consider within our data is that some students um, had moved to the middle school or out of district in general, and then a change of bus driver during the school year.
So these are some PBIS um, supports that we um, implemented this year to help with this. Colleen and I made it, um, that we're going out to the bus driver and the students every day in the morning and after school and greeting them, the students and the driver. We're doing shout-outs on the announcements when the bus driver tells us they had a great day on the way to school, or on the way home that they tell us the next morning. We're calling parents of, when the bus driver tells us, like, hey, this, this kid has been doing incredible. We're calling parents to do that shout-out. We're spending extra time greeting and reminding um, those students of the Hawk Trades, those students that are struggling as they exit the building. We're also aiding the bus driver with students needing reminders before going home. We're maintaining constant communication with the bus driver to bridge that gap of, you know, the bus is a school on wheels. Um, we're having, uh, the transportation has been able to put an aide on the bus when available, some days of the week. We're having conversations with students on what do you need to be successful on the bus? So I've purchased some fidgets for students to use. I'm also spending like five to ten minutes some days, having like encouragement talks, playing a little card game or something with some of those students that need that extra love and support. Um, we're trying to do little thankfulness treats to the bus driver. We eat some pumpkin bread to the bus driver and the attendant one day, just to thank them. And then the biggest piece is building those relationships. We're trying really hard to build those relationships with these students, as well as the bus driver and the aide. And then also, we've had great conversations with the bus driver, where she is saying to, she said to me, boy, this makes such a difference when I build a relationship with these students. So it's been, it's been really good to...
And just, just to share on that end, just some observational data as the kiddos come through the door. I can't count on one hand any student that's come in crying upset over something this year that has happened on the bus since we implemented this plan.
Some other things that we tried, that we've done, is we offered a parent luncheon. We communicate with parents that way to offer them a luncheon to come in and chat with us, because we of course had some parents that were like, why are you doing this? I don't understand, you know, so like we've done this. We also, um, we talked to the bus driver, and she chose to offer some incentives on the bus herself. Um, each quarter, we're doing like a PBIS activity, kind of as a reward for those students that don't get referrals. And so I ordered these stickers off of Amazon, so I'm giving them stickers. They go home, so their parents can be like, oh, so you know, what happened? So they see that, we're looking at in the winter of doing like a board game activity, maybe like in the cafeteria at the end of the day, one day. Um, I work in the lunchroom, so I'm constantly reminding those in the lunchroom and encouraging them that I know that are my um, my heavy hitters on the bus. And then also just, I've had some incredible conversations with students regarding those bus safety videos and the reflection sheets, just getting a chance to have those restorative conversations with students. And so this year, this is what the data looks like so far. The start of the fall in September, we had six referrals, so a drop of four. We did have an increase in October compared to last year. But all of these referrals, so twenty-four referrals only came from sixteen students. So then we really needed to work on looking at those repeat students. So that's consistent with last year's data, and those are the same repetitive students that have the referrals and the severity of behavior continues to increase. So we set up some different interventions. Um, we've had parent meetings with Joshua Transportation with these parents. We've also brought in our school resource officer with one family that we needed that. We've done a couple of EGYA referrals. We've also um, had the intervention of changing the student's bus, so they ride a different bus. We've also done some things, I've done some things with some of the lower L students, like an individual bus chart, where they have their own incentive plan they're working on. And then we also reconvene the whole team. Uh, we did that, I think, on Halloween, that half-day, with the whole team that met in August, just to discuss where things at and where are some things we can do more.
And so some of our projected goal is um, partnering together with our newly hired counselor um, to support this work and our plan as well. And then our goal is to decrease the referrals, and we're gonna do it by twenty-five percent from last school year to this school year um, in June. And so we went around and wanted to just get some student testimonials. And so um, this is an activity that we started in the beginning, kind of just some um, pre-data with the kiddos and post in terms of what their thoughts were. Um, we did a sample of kindergarten through fifth graders, um, in some jobs that we put here. I used to think um, the bus was so loud, this is quote their language, um, and now I think it has calmed down. Um, it feels good, I can get a reward, it feels good to get a compliment. That was from a third grader. Sweet. Um, I used to feel chaotic, um, and now I feel sometimes so peaceful. That's from a fourth grader. And so, very exciting piece to add to um, our bus matrix from last year. We wanted to ensure that video modeling is so important, there's a lot of research behind that. And so adding this to our matrix, and so I would like all of you to enjoy. It's a three-minute video.
I... Go ahead. I don't like that, I don't... Yeah, it's not allowing me to click on the link or anything. Not only to highlight it. Do you have the other presentation we're presenting from? With that, that was different, that had the colored slides? Were we just...
Yep.
Yeah. Try that one that says open up.
There we go, yeah. So this is from...
There we go. Yeah, this was the one that I initially tried to show.
Just click, can she just click it?
I'm trying, trying.
I can try. Do you have the email I sent it to you um, a chance?
That way. This won't be worth the wait. It's very, very cute.
We practiced it many times and it plays something. No, I can't. Gonna hold your phone, can you just show them?
So I can open up my email, if you wanna try and come there and check if it was a live moment?
Sure.
A little safe while this is loading. At the end of the day, we um, it's just been wonderful to collaborate with so many on this piece um, and to be part of this work. I know transportation is very grateful.
Um, if you can't get it, that's okay, maybe you can just email it to us. We wanna see it, we know you like it.
Hold on, it's the two-factor. I don't know if it's a different, it works.
It's okay.
The link works on um... On our end, would we have it in a PDF format? I'm not sure. So the language for the song, that was a little bit of AI. Um, and that came right from our poster in our, our matrix, so. And I did not drive the bus.
She tried.
I might have asked.
Thank you very much, of course. Brian, you got any AI in your...
First of all, it was a chicken sandwich. And then there was the puppy. All right, good evening, just a short presentation tonight, just to...
One second, let's just...
Okay. Okay, good. Everybody's gonna get Alexis, one second. Just gotta pull everything back up.
Sure, no worries. Um, just a short presentation, definitely had a couple slides, but just to tell you that we're on schedule for getting our summer twenty twenty-five projects out for bidding. Pit pack six and seven are out the door, they're on the street right now. We're gonna have a uh, pre-bid meeting this Thursday with the bidders, and then the bids are due on December fifth. And then um, we're going to do posted interviews on December sixth, and then bring the results to the facility committee, probably around the tenth or eleventh or so, and then we get the board meeting the following Monday for awards, so. On that track, we're on, we're on schedule. So I know Christie's working hard right now, getting uh, bidders notified and bringing everybody to the, to the table. And then after board of contracts, we'll um, by the board, we'll make the contracts to the bidders during the month of December. And then after the new year in January through May, we'll be doing submittals and procuring the materials, and then um, starting construction in uh, June for the parking lots. Maybe the concession buildings might be able to get a little bit earlier. We'll just see how that works out as we get closer into the spring. But uh, that's really what I had for tonight, is we're on schedule and we're off the bids, and looking forward to getting the bids in and uh, presenting to the board in December.
Thank you.
Any questions on anything?
Thanks, Brian. All right, um, next up, I'll do board report. Um, so we actually had, um, we have, I just wanna say a couple things about Jane. Jane, um, this is probably gonna be your last board meeting, because she took the appointed position um, two years ago, and just on the fly, she really dove in. Um, but the way that appointed position goes is as soon as uh, the election is certified, then the person that um, put in for that position gets it. So it's a little bit different, cause she comes off before anyone else. But I just wanna say a couple things about Jane. Um, on behalf of the Brandon School District, I wanna take a moment to express our heartfelt gratitude to Jane Derry-Burkett for her dedication and service over the past two years. During her time on the board, Jane has not only been a reliable and thoughtful voice for our district, but she has also taken the opportunity to attend several county school board events and school board classes. Her commitment to professional development and continuous learning has truly made a difference in the way we approach education in this community. But perhaps most importantly... But perhaps most importantly, Jane has been an advocate for our district. Whether attending events, engaging with the community, or simply out and about, she consistently promotes the positive work happening in our schools. She often says this, she gets so giddy and excited when she talks about all the things going on here. Her positive outlook and dedication to our students, staff, and families have been a bright light, and her presence will be missed. I've enjoyed my time getting to know Jane, and I will miss her presence on the board. I know her family, particularly her grandchildren, will be happy to have more time with their grandmother. Family is the foundation of everything, and we wish her all the best as she transitions into the next chapter. Jane, thank you for everything you've done for our schools and community. Your time, energy, and enthusiasm have made a lasting impact, and we are grateful for the positive difference you have made during your time on the board. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and we know you will continue to shine in everything you do.
Extremely thoughtful, and it's, it was an honor. Thank you for appointing me, I just appreciate it so much, working with everybody, you need to know everyone, and I'm just so proud of the district and the future and where we're going. So I hate to jump off, I would love to stay and hang out some more with all of you, but duty calls, so. Nana duties, you know, nana duties. And I am working full-time, so, those two things. But thank you very much, and I'm just so proud of the district, the administration, Carly, the teachers, the staff, and all the hard work that everybody is putting into, you know, your careers, and especially the community of the students, because, you know, our students are, is our future, and this community, you know, is where we all live. So it's a wonderful place to be, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane, I appreciate it. Okay, so moving on to public comments and questions on agenda business. Okay, all right, next to approval of consent agenda.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the consent agenda, ask presented.
Second discussion. Can I get a vocal?
Herb? Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jeff, yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, next up is finance report, but we're not gonna have one, we do not have one today. And education report.
So tonight, we are kind of gonna revisit what we talked about this time last year, but expanding that conversation a little bit further. So last year at this time, our ELA team from the high school presented on the progress of their book choice program with 11th grade, and we've got some news to share this year about an expansion of that to reach more of our students, more of our teachers, and we've got some guests here to do that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Gwen Stein, Kristen Kelsey, Rebecca Dawson, and Megan Kazlowski, so they can share where we are and where we're going.
So, we're back. So we wanted to share kind of the work we've been doing, and we're really excited about it, so we have some new novels in English Language Earth at the high school, so. Oh, yes, that's right.
There is none.
There's none.
Is this touchscreen?
It's touchy.
It's just touchy.
So in 2020, 2021, the teachers had kind of a simple goal, we wanted students to read more. There's a lot of benefits to reading, among them are reading fiction, our vocabulary increasing and helping with memory, critical thinking, building empathy, there's a lot of benefits to reading fiction. So since then, the English department, all the students have an independent reading book that they read on their own. It's something they choose, does not pressure evaluation, and the whole focus is to read, to enjoy the reading. And after the teachers have implemented this, we had some really interesting results, good results. Okay. So before the choice reading, most of our students did not identify as a reader, that was not something they considered themselves, they couldn't categorize themselves. After the independent reading unit, the number of students who did consider themselves readers grew by 30%, which is like a pretty, pretty big gap, for kids to admit that, that they're readers. So that was very encouraging. And so there was a noticeable difference, not just in ELA classes, but outside the English classes. Students, we would see, we had reports of teachers in other disciplines saying how the students had their reading books with them in science class, or administrators noticed that the kids would have them at lunch, carrying them around. So the teachers were surprised how kids, if they finished their assignments early, rather than getting out their phone or asking for that, they'd pull out a book, like on their own. So it was just very exciting. So the kids were actually choosing to read, and it made some conversations. I believe one of the administrators said, you know, recognizing the book covers, it's like, oh, I read that too, so just a nice, lots of benefits to this. So because of this impact, the English classes, the English 11 classes, they replaced an old book with a choice reading unit in 22, 23. Students had six more current, I guess, what do you say, what do you say? Lot more contemporary novels to choose from, and replacing older tech, or older texts, and the students participated in book clubs. Okay, and this is where they were able to talk with their peers about the books, engage with the text, and, you know, and had a lot of choice in there. And the results from students was amazing.
So then, in that same survey, they were asked, how often do you finish the entire book, which was not promising. However, once they received the choice to choose a book that they were interested in, that increased to, or increased 17%. So that was a significant jump as well. This is really exciting to hear that, you should just wanna finish a book. So we were also just kind of deep diving into our own collection of books to see what would we like to keep, what are we, what are we wanting to update? And we kind of did some research on how old our books were, and the oldest one dating back to 1937. And while they're still phenomenal books, they're not necessarily connecting to students anymore, so.
Although we love them.
So then, of course, what's really important is that students enjoy reading and develop a love of reading. And so by giving them that choice, it has increased by 13%. And prior to that, students didn't have much joy in reading, and so we're fostering this buy-in to a very necessary skill. So our goal continues to stay the same, to encourage an enjoyment and, in reading, engagement as well. Building off choice and just being engaged in what you're doing in class, having ownership of your education. Achieving this book, or, I'm sorry, achieving this goal means that we've been very, very busy, and we've been reading books on books, on books, on books.
Dozens.
So, yeah. It has been a fantastic time. Fun book clubs going on. But we hope to keep the standards and the curriculum the same, just updating our reading options.
And so, these are the books to be purchased. We have, after reading a lot of books, we've settled on these books for English IX. And again, students would be able to pick from these books and settle on one. And again, similarly to English XI, do books, club-style conversations on those books. And that, this is for English IX.
And they would be, they're connected all by a common, common theme, there's a common thread between them.
Yeah, English IX, one of our core units that we teach because of Michigan's standards is Romeo and Juliet. So we're exploring the ideas of love and allegiance, and all these books have a lot of ties that connect to that. So our base book will be Romeo and Juliet as a freshman, and then we add the book club to that.
And this would be for English X. So many of our books in English X are, or, English X is American Lit. So so much of American literature is, you know, journal from Christopher Columbus, Declaration of Independence, you know, it's, it's very much steeped in history. So kind of going around that idea, it would be, these are all connected by the power of one. You see that in books, in some of the earlier readings, early American readings, and then also with the crucible. And that would be kind of that main tie-in for this. And this is English XII. English XII has been a class that, you know, it's, it's kind of changed over my course of 23 years here, it's kind of changed in what we've been teaching. So the goal here is to kind of continue with the idea of seniors and go with hope and redemption as they're starting kind of their next chapter. That seemed to kind of be a theme that worked really, really well, especially as they're writing college scholarships and applications and all sorts of stuff. Okay, so why these books? Why did we settle on these books? The first thing we did was we thought thematically, what is something that's already happening in these classes? And what are we already teaching? Because again, our goal is not to really change any standards, it's to really just think, how can we make it even more accessible? With Romeo and Juliet and English IX, the whole theme is love and allegiance, so we kind of started there, and then chose a bunch of books and read a bunch of books for that. Then the same thing for the English X teacher sat down, the power of one stood out, and then English XII, it was about hope and redemption. So we started to really think thematically and what themes are already there. So then we started to find books with teen voices, because again, our goal is to be accessible to these kids, because we want to continue enjoyment. We started talking to teachers that we know, we started getting on teacher forums, we started listening to kind of like the English buzz that's out there, and then we started to weed and read. For every book that was chosen, there were several that did not make the list. And we also made sure that we employed administrators, and this Kazlowski was wonderful in reading so many of these books. Multiple teachers read every single book. We also had some parents step in and help read books as well, because we just wanna make sure everybody is, you know, excited, as excited as we are.
Oakland Schools was also a great resource during this, too.
So that's kind of where we come in with step five, is that we're working now with Oakland Schools, really being allowed time to sit down and think about scaffolding these units, so that when it goes from nine to 10, 10 to 11, 11 to 12, everything kind of has a process as far as skill goes. And so we're just continuing working in our department and at these meetings and just thinking about best practices. So thank you for supporting this great unit.
All right. Next, next up is action items. Construction manager selection.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the selection of construction management company Barton Mello, ask presented. Second, new discussion.
Can I get a vocal?
Herb? Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jeff, yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, got that, Brian? All right, citizens input. My checklist, sis? Third, no one else. Brian, no one? Okay, no one. Okay, all righty. Then, hey, meeting adjourned.
This is 45 minutes.